Good evening and thank you for joining us this evening for our City Council meeting. We'll go ahead and get started. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Here.
Gray?
Cheatham?
Here.
Lurick?
Here.
Ortega?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
Thank you. If you would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, after which if you would remain standing for the invocation which will be offered by Mary Ann Forrest representing HS Joshua Ministries.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. It's an honor again to be here. I appreciate the invitation. So precious Father God, I thank you for this opportunity once again to come before the City Council in our amazing city. We just lift this time up to you. We lift up the plans that you have for this city, the Gates City. I thank you that your plans are good and your plans are for us. I thank you that you are working with our leadership to continue to work your will and purpose in this city. I ask that the creative ideas and plans that are put forth will go ahead and be carried through with our leadership, that you will continue to give them wisdom and guidance and direction, and I ask that for all of our community, Lord, that you will just give all of us the direction and wisdom that we need to move forward to help in this plan. I ask for Psalms 91, hedge of protection, to be around our city, our leaders, our community, and Lord, I just ask that your will will be done. We will give you the praise, the glory, and the honor in your name. We ask all of this, Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Thank you. Way up here. Carrie, what are you doing there? Good one. Thank you. We'll move to Agenda Item 3 is the Consent Agenda. The following business items may be approved by one motion and a vote. If any one member of the council so desires, any matter listed can be moved to a separate Agenda Item. A, minutes. Council may wish to read the oral reading of the minutes. Let me start over. A, minutes. Council may wish to waive the oral reading of the minutes and approve the minutes from the Work Session Meeting of November 14, 2019, and the City Council Executive Session of January 9, 2020. B, payroll and material claims. Council may wish to consider payroll and material claims for the month of January 2020. Good evening, Ashley. How are you?
I'm good, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Ashley Welsh, Chief Financial Officer. Tonight I am presenting the payroll and material claims for January 2020. Total payroll and material claims for the month were $7,76,871. Total payroll-related claims were $3,886,423. We had changes in field positions of a decrease of one full-time and a decrease of three part-time positions for an overall decrease of four positions. Vendor claims for the month were $3,190,449. Some of the large vendor claims were paid to multiple vendors for $432,196 for Hillview Settlement reimbursements. We also made a payment to key government finance for water revenue bonds in the amount of $534,911. The remaining large vendor claims explain 88.05% of all the vendor claims for the month of January. On the back of the report, we've given you information on our January purchase card activity. We had 836 transactions in the month of January for a total amount of $258,000, and we had 150 cardholders with transactions for the month. We also had three purchase agents with monthly totals greater than $10,000, and the types of expenditures are listed for your review. This completes my report. Are there any questions?
Any questions, Council? Thank you, Ashley. Move to C, Animal Shelter Advisory Board Appointments. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of Arlene Walker and Kelly Boudreaux to serve as a member of the Animal Shelter Advisory Board. Ms. Walker will be replacing Kathy Reynolds, who resigned, and his term will begin February 7, 2020, and will expire February 17, 2021. Mr. Boudreaux will be replacing Mary Johnson, whose term expired, and his term will begin February 9, 2020, and will expire February 9, 2022. D, Animal Shelter Advisory Board Appointments. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of Rona Martinez to serve as a member of the Animal Shelter Advisory Board, representing the Banach Humane Society, and replacing Cheryl Lucely, whose Ms. Martinez's term will begin February 17, 2020, and will expire February 17, 2022. E, Americans with Disabilities Act Grievance Committee Appointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of Mandy Greaser to serve as a member of the American Disabilities Act Grievance Committee. Ms. Greaser's term will be filling a long-term vacancy, and her term will begin February 7, 2020, and will expire February 8, 2022. F, Council Decision Crestview Cove Flat Approval. Council may wish to adopt this decision approving the final plat for Crestview Cove, which subdivides approximately 2.66 acres of land into 11 lots, one of which shall be held in common with the Homeowners Association and dedicated for stormwater retention, subject to two conditions. The property is located south of Monson Street and east of Satterfield Drive. Council President Adamson.
Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second. We have a motion by Council President Adamson and a second by Cheatham. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll move to Agenda Item 4 is Communication and Proclamation. I'm not seeing any Scouts, Boy Scouts out there, but I am seeing a whole bunch of League of Women Voters representatives that...
We're the Girl Scouts.
Oh, the Girl Scouts. The Girl Scouts.
They're out of uniforms.
They're actually in uniform, it looks to me like, and we do have a League of Women Voters Day proclamation, which will be read by Councilwoman Linda Lurick.
All righty. Whereas, the League of Women Voters was founded in 1920 as a mighty political experiment by the Four Mothers of the Suffragists Movement at the Convention of the National American Women Suffrage Association, and whereas their goal was to help the 20 million women who were granted the right to vote by the 19th Amendment understand and carry out their new responsibility as voters, and whereas with the success of this effort and the tireless efforts over the last 100 years to strengthen and uphold its mission to empower voters and defend democracy, the League has become a trusted, nonpartisan grassroots organization, and whereas the League has sponsored legislation and fought in the courts to protect and strengthen voting rights and access and for free and fair elections, civil rights, children, community health, and education, and whereas the League has consistently been noted for its nonpartisan election information, including sponsorship of candidate forums and information on state and local ballot issues, as well as its commitment to register, educate, and mobilize voters, and whereas the League champions government systems that are open, transparent, inclusive, and equitable, and whereas the League believes that active and engaged citizens irrespective of gender, ethnicity, or political affiliation are the hallmark of democracy. Now therefore, I, Brian C. Blad, Mayor of the City of Pocatello, do hereby proclaim February 14, 2020 to be League of Women Voters Day in Pocatello, and encourage all citizens to join in honoring and congratulating the League of Women Voters on its 100th anniversary and commending the League for its significant contributions to empowering voters and making democracy work.
Yeah. Appreciate it. Okay.
Thank you, Councilmember Lurick, for reading that. I appreciate it, and thank you to Mayor Blad and the City Council. The proclamation speaks for itself. Our Four Mothers were the ones that laid the groundwork for what we're doing today, and we have a responsibility to continue with that work and honor their legacy by creating a path for those who follow behind us, and that is what these women, brilliant women, are doing, and I'm so proud of them, and I didn't mean to get emotional. I apologize, but thank you so much. This is very meaningful.
It's amazing. 100 years. Congratulations. Thank you very much. Okay, we will move to Agenda Item Number 5 is the Calendar Review. Council may take this opportunity to inform other council members of upcoming meetings and events that should be called to their attention. On February 13 at 9:00 AM, we will have a Work Session. At February 18 at 6:00 PM, we will have a Town Hall Meeting. February 20 at 2:00 PM will be a Work Session Clarification Meeting. February 20 at 5:30 PM will be a clarification meeting. February 20 at 6:00 PM will be a regular City Council Meeting. Other events, the 42nd Annual Simplot Games at Holt Arena happen on February 13, 14, and 15. City offices will be closed February 17 for President's Day, however, garbage and recycle pickups will be on schedule. Winter programs are happening at Zoo Idaho. Contact the Zoo Office for more information. Citizens Police Academy is now accepting applications. Please contact the Police Department for more information. Snow removal reminder, when clearing your sidewalks and/or driveways, do not place snow in the streets. It becomes a driving hazard. We move to Agenda Item Number 6 is a short plat Hatch University subdivision. Angela Hatch, represented by Crystal Chenda of A&amp;E Engineering Incorporated, has submitted a short plat application to subdivide 1.33 acres, more or less, into three residential lots. The property located at 540 University Drive will be known as Hatch University Subdivision.
Mayor?
Yes. Council President Adamson.
I move that we approve the plat with the conditions noted.
Check.
We have a motion by President Adamson and a second by Cheatham. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 7, Donation Acceptance Contract Animal Shelter. Council may wish to accept a donation from the Friends of the Animal Shelter of an industrial washing machine and an industrial dryer for use at the animal shelter. If accepted, council may also wish to authorize the mayor to execute a contract with Smith Taylor Incorporated for installation of the equipment. The installation, including modifications to the facility, concrete, additional gas line, additional and duct work, will be paid for by the Friends of the Animal Shelter. There will be no cost to the city.
Mayor?
Yes.
I need to just disclose that I'm on the board of the Friends of the Animal Shelter.
Okay.
So I'm wearing two hats, I guess.
Tonight you're wearing two hats. Sounds great.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move to approve Agenda Item Number 7, the donation acceptance of the equipment being given to the animal shelter, and authorize the mayor to execute a contract for installation of the equipment, subject to legal department review.
Second.
Okay, we got Lurick as a second. Okay, we have a motion by Cheatham and a second by Lurick. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 8, LTAC State-Local Agreement for Carson Street Bridge Project. Council may wish to consider the following regarding a Carson Street Bridge project. A, approve a state and local agreement with LTAC for the bridge bundle project. B, authorize the mayor to execute the state and local agreement and other documents related to the bridge bundle project, and C, authorize expenditure of $28,328.87 for the bridge bundle project. Funds for the project are available in Fund 70. Council President?
Mayor, I move that we approve the agreement. We authorize you to sign and execute any other necessary documents, and that we authorize the expenditure noted. Second.
We have a motion by President Adamson and a second by Stevens. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 9, Bid Contract WPC Facility Storage Building Upgrades. Council may wish to consider recommendations of staff for the following requests regarding the WPC Facility Storage Building upgrades. A, accept the lowest responsive bid received on January 14, 2020, from Steel Design LLC in the amount of $93,687.08 for a total bid, and if the bid is accepted, B, authorize the mayor's execution of the agreement between the City of Pocatello and Steel Design LLC in the amount of $93,687.08 for the WPC Facility Storage Building upgrades, subject to legal department review. The project includes expansion of the enclosed area of an existing storage building. In addition to bay doors, the upgrades will allow for more dry storage for equipment and materials at the WPC facility. If approved, the work will begin March 2020 and will be completed beginning of April 2020. Funds for the project are budgeted and available in the WPC capital account.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman Stevens.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept the low responsive bid from Steel Design LLC in the amount of $93,687.08 total bid, and if accepted, we authorize you to sign any necessary paperwork pending legal department review. Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Stevens and a second by Ortega. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Stevens?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 10, 2020 Water Department Materials Bid. Council may wish to consider bids received on January 16, 2020, for materials used by the Water Department for capital improvement projects, maintenance, and replenishing inventory. The bid is separated into 13 separate lots in an effort to guarantee the lowest price for the city. Staff request the council award each lot to the lowest responsive bidder as follows. A, Core and Main LP Lots 1, 2, 5, 6, 11, 12, and 13, $190,551.71. B, Ferguson Water Works Lots 7, 8, and 9, $8,815. And C, HD Flower Company Lots 3, 4, and 10, for $156,790. Let me get to it. Total cost for the materials bid is $356,156.71. Funds are available in the Water Department's fiscal year 2020 budget.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move for acceptance of Agenda Item Number 10, the 2020 Water Department Materials Bid, Items A, B, and C.
Second.
We have a motion by Cheatham and a second by Lurick. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 11, Notice of Award and Construction Agreement Airport. Council may wish to approve and authorize the mayor to sign a notice of award, construction agreement, and any other pertinent documents between the City of Pocatello and Dipaco for rehab of a portion of aircraft parking apron at the airport. Cost of the project will be $1,502,981.90 and will be funded 93.75% by the FAA grant funds and 6.25% by airport passenger facility charges.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we accept Agenda Item Number 11, the Notice of Award and Construction Agreement with regard to rehabbing the airport parking apron, and authorize you to sign the notice of award for that.
Second.
We have a motion by Ortega and a second by Cheatham. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Ortega?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 12, Airport Concessions Disadvantaged Business Enterprise ACDBE Program Policy and Goal: Methology Airport. Council may wish to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the Pocatello Regional Airport Concessions Disadvantaged Business Enterprise ACDBE Program. Say that 10 times really fast. I guarantee you're going to get tongue-twister there. Program and pertinent documents. The program is required by FAA and requirement by FAA to be submitted every three years along with an ACDBE participation goal and goal methology.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'm going to take this one one.
Good luck.
I move that we approve and authorize the mayor to sign the Pocatello Regional Airport Concession Disadvantaged Business Enterprise ACDBE Program and pertinent documents.
Thank you. I think we should all try five times to say that. We have a motion by Lurick and a second by Cheatham. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Lurick?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 13 is an ordinance, 13A, An Ordnance Amending Pocatello Municipal Code Title 16 Subdivision Regulations Specifically by Amending Section 16.04.040 Extraterritorial Authority 16.08.010 General Definitions and 16.16.010 Short Plat Subdivisions, as well as various sections of Chapter 16.12 Pre-Application Review 16.120 Preliminary Subdivision Plat Application 16.24 Final Subdivision Plat Application, and 16.28 Property Line Adjustment Provisions to improve the subdivision process and applicable code sections within that said title. Council, how do you wish this ordinance to be read? Council President Adamson.
Mayor, I move the ordinance Agenda Item 13A be read only by title and placed on final passage for publication, and that only the ordinance summary sheet be submitted for publication.
Check.
We have a motion by Adamson and a second by Cheatham. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Rich, could you please read the ordinance?
Yes, Mayor. An ordinance of the City of Pocatello Municipal Corporation of Idaho amending sections title 16 subdivision regulations of the revised and compiled ordinance of the City of Pocatello, more particularly by amending sections 16.04.040 Extraterritorial Authority 16.08.010 General Definitions, and 16.010 Short Plat Subdivision, as well as various sections of Chapter 16.12 Pre-Application Review, Chapter 16.20 Preliminary Subdivision Plat Application, Chapter 16.25 Final Subdivision Plat Application, and Chapter 16.28 Property Line Adjustment Provisions to improve the subdivision process and applicable code sections within said title, provided that this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage, approval, and publication according to law.
I declare that to be the final reading of the ordinance. Shall the ordinance pass?
Adamson?
Yes.
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 13B, An Ordnance Amending Pocatello Municipal Code Title 17 Zoning Regulations Specifically by Amending Chapter 17.01 General Provisions 17.02 Land Use Decisions and 17.04 Overland Areas 17.05 Development Standards and 17.06 Special Use Standards, and by repealing and replacing Chapter 17.03 Zoning Districts to improve the function and administration of the title. Council President Adamson.
Mayor, I move the ordinance Agenda Item 13B be read only by title and placed on final passage for publication, and that only the ordinance summary sheet be submitted for publication.
Check.
Thank you. We have a motion by President Adamson and a second by Cheatham. Rich, could you please call the roll? Oh, wait. No, no. Connie, would you call the roll? I got to step ahead there. Sorry. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Okay, Rich, could you now please read the ordinance?
Sure.
Thank you.
An ordinance of the City of Pocatello Municipal Corporation of Idaho amending sections title 17 zoning regulations of the revised and compiled ordinance of the City of Pocatello, more particularly by amending Chapter 17.01 General Provisions, Chapter 17.02 Land Use Definition Decisions, Chapter 17.04 Overland Areas, Chapter 17.05 Development Standards, and Chapter 17.06 Special Use Standards, and by repealing and replacing Chapter 17.03 Zoning Districts for the purpose of improving the function and administration of this title and provided that this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage, approval, and publication according to law.
I would rather hear Connie's voice, just so you know. I declare that to be the final reading of the ordinance. Shall the ordinance pass?
Adamson?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 13C, An Ordnance Amending Pocatello Municipal Code 15.02.010A National Electrical Code 2017 Edition Appendix H and IDAPA Standards 07.01.06 to bring the city in conformity with the National Electrical Code and in line with other jurisdictions.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move the ordinance Agenda Item 13C be read only by title and placed on final passage for publication, and that only the ordinance summary sheet be submitted for publication.
Second.
I'm going to give it to Lurick because she is...
She deserves it.
She deserves it. So we have a motion by Cheatham and a second by Lurick. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Rich, could you please read the ordinance?
Happily. An ordinance of the City of Pocatello Municipal Corporation of Idaho amending title 15, Chapter 2, Section 10 Code Adoptions of the Revising and Compiled Orders of the City of Pocatello to bring the city into compliance with the National Electrical Code, and provided that this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage, approval, and publication according to law.
I declare that to be the final reading of the ordinance. Shall the ordinance pass?
Adamson?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 14, Discussion Items. This time it's been set aside to hear discussion items not listed on the agenda. Items which appear somewhere else on the agenda will not be discussed at this time. The council is not allowed to take any official action at this meeting on matters brought forward under this agenda item. Items will either be referred to the appropriate staff or scheduled on a subsequent agenda. You must sign in at the start of the meeting in order to be recognized. As a reminder, there is a total of 15 minutes for this agenda item, and there's three minutes per person. We have white, odder goggles. Is that...
Goggles, right.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank the council for letting me here. Just come to invite and bring awareness to our 6th Annual Resource and Job Fair, be held on March 24, 2020, held at the Shoshone Banach Hotel and Casino from times of 3:00 PM to 8:00 PM. We have opened this one up to mostly resources to help combat our homelessness, hunger, and the disadvantaged. Also, we are focused on our disabilities, but we open it up to all communities, surrounding communities of East Idaho. And I do have flyers for you guys if you want some.
We would love those, but before you bring those up, remind me again the date. 6th Annual?
6th Annual, March 24, 2020.
Perfect.
From 3:00 PM to 8:00 PM at the Shoshone Banach Hotel and Casino.
Super. You guys do an incredible job with that, so we appreciate that.[1752.11] You guys do an incredible job with that, so we appreciate that, thank you.
I would like a flyer, if you have one.
Yep, well, if you can bring us, how many do you have? Do you have six, seven?
We can make copies.
We can make copies, so I can just hand them back and forth a few nights ago.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're gonna keep one and hand the rest.
And if we would get a letter of support from the council, that would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Okay, you bet, thank you. Why, where would we send a letter?
My email's on there, I believe.
Okay.
And then we can get that device to the website.
Okay, oh, is it there?
I don't see your email.
I don't see an email, but here, why don't you take that, write your email on that so I'll have it, and then I'll just grab it to you here in a minute. Thank you. Do you need a pen?
I got one.
Okay. Thank you. Ted King?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council. I'd like to thank you for this opportunity to speak. I'm a Pocatello resident, a construction worker, a mother. That's why I'm here. My son is a very impressionable, adorable four-year-old boy who currently believes he is Spider-Man because he saw it and he loves it. And that seems to be the nature of children. And so why I'm here is to propose that restrictions, at least in our municipality, be placed on what groups or organizations can have access to our children in the public forum or at least taxpayer-funded buildings, be they ideologically driven, politically driven, or religiously driven. My opinion, I think we'll see of those, you know, in our community, is what is appropriate to present to the formative mind. Drag Queen Story Hour across the nation is obviously an extremely controversial event that takes place in a lot of areas. Our community has had it going on for some time, to which I was unaware, which is maybe I'm the first person to present an outcry against this, but I do have citizens rallying with me. I, speaking to the library, they've told me that there is no restrictions currently on who can present anything inside the Marshall Olympic Library. At one point I asked, can be O-Nazis, or somebody else with a far, a far-leaning political ideology, or even religious ideology? Can somebody that controversial step in? And they said, yes, O-Nazis, anybody, we have no restrictions. At that point, that's where I'm concerned. Our taxpayer-funded building, to host anything that, say, could possibly not be in line with what the voters would like as a majority in the community. There's studies, the Brown University published a study that showed a link between rapid-onset gender dysphoria and exposure to Drag Queen Story Hour. During the formative years, for us, for us to place something as extravagant as the drag lifestyle, which is a part of the LGBT community, to place that in front of our children during the formative years, I believe to be a detriment. And so I would move that the council would work toward passing legislation that would restrict who has access to our children, especially in taxpayer-funded buildings. Those restrictions, obviously, like I ask, you know, political ideology, anything like that, let's go ahead and handle that in our homes. Let's press our values onto our children in our homes, or into something that's privately funded. Like I said, we risk, we run the risk of going against the will of the voters when we do something like this. And so I ask that you would ask the community what they would do as well, before legislation is passed, that you would do the will of this community. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you very much for your, for coming tonight, we appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you.
We'll move to John Jones. If you'd like to hand those out, John, you can go ahead and hand them out if you want.
I'll take my time doing that.
Okay, thank you.
My name is John Jones. I am a 14-year active member of the Senior Activity Center. My partner Dot and I ran karaoke and supervised dances there for the past 13 years. I represent a group called Save Our Senior Center. I am here to explain our cause and present a petition signed by participants and members of the Senior Activity Center. A few years back, we were looking at grants to repair and expand our senior center. Then NKA lost their building just north of here, and everything changed. When NKA members started running for our Board of Directors, I was concerned and talked to our Board Chairman, Wally Smith, about it. He assured me that before we continued or committed to any building sharing with NKA or others, he would put the whole idea up for vote at the Senior Activity Center. Wally did not get reelected, and I now saw no interest by the board in sharing the course with the general membership. I sat in on the last two board meetings, and focus was largely on collaborating with NKA and other groups to form what they were now calling a community center. The word senior, they said, would be too negative. They talked about the problems of the Farmers Insurance Building and the possibilities of the Calvary Chapel Building. I decided the way to let seniors know and voice their opposition was through a petition. I was sure that other seniors felt the same as I did about our building, its location, and staying independent of other groups. Before circulating my petition, I stopped by the mayor's office and talked to his secretary, who told me that we did have the right to circulate a petition, and that we would not receive any repercussions for doing so. She also invited me to bring the petition to the city council meeting, where I could speak about it. I started sharing the petition on January 23, and over the weekend I had 91 signatures. That was about 90% of those who were shown and read the petition. The petition now has 128 signatures and is growing. I will ask this question, what if the senior activity, or senior building ad hoc committee was started under a false idea that we at the Senior Activity Center want to join other groups, like NKA, and share our building? My petition indicates that the overwhelming majority of us do not. What do we want? We want, we don't want to be part of a community center. We want our Board of Directors to focus on keeping, repairing our wonderful building, its location, and our independence from other groups. Please see the handouts with a copy of my petition and my experience in circulating it. Thank you.
Thank you. And I do have this petition, I will make sure we get it in the right hands. Thank you very much. All right, thank you very much for joining us tonight, we sure appreciate your participation. I'd like to thank the council that came in early for a special meeting this afternoon, and thank them for your hard work and everything today, so thank you very much, and with that we are adjourned.